We'll call this regular meeting July tenth at seven oh three. Please stand for the budge and leave.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Court, please call the room. Here.
Taylor.
Here.
Mr. Dingle. Mr. Dunphy. Sherman.
Yes.
Mr. Booth.
Here.
Masonic. Here.
I'm going to excuse Mr. Dunphy. Second. Third call of the roll.
Mr. Taylor.
Yes.
Mr. Sherman.
Yes.
Mr. Booth.
Yes.
Mr. Masonic. Yes. Mr. Sherman.
Yes. And I assume this is where we address, um, Miss Tingle has submitted a letter of resignation. Uh, should we read the letter?
No.
No, okay.
Just whether you accept it or not.
Okay. Um, motion to accept her letter of resignation. So.
Second. Third call of the roll.
Mr. Sherman.
With a sad heart, yes.
Mr. Booth.
Yes.
Mr. Masonic. Yes. Taylor. Mr. Sherman.
Yes.
Uh, Mr. President, do we, Mr. Vice President, do we, what's, how long did we provide last time when we requested, uh, like announce an open seat? Probably announce it tomorrow as far as like it was and start taking letters.
Okay.
And then, um, leave it open for, what, a week or two, two weeks until the next council meeting?
Our next council meeting is, we won't have a second one in July. So the next regular meeting would be the first time in August.
Okay, well, can we put a deadline on it and have a special meeting if we have to, so we'll be able to appoint somebody?
Or should we go ahead and have the second meeting in July?
We're going to be, uh, interviewing the city manager candidates as well.
That's what you guys think?
It's ever the better, get process started.
So we'll take the letters till the twenty-fourth and interview at the special meeting on the thirty-first.
Uh, yeah, during the last one of thirty-first.
Same night where you, yeah, manager candidates.
Yeah, the second.
I'd say you're going to do both of those.
I'm sorry, but thirty-first, that's the second.
That's the initial. The seventeenth will be the initial interview.
Okay, okay.
The thirty-first will be the second interview. Correct? Yeah. So we'll take, uh, the letters of interest till the twenty-fourth. And then, should we go to executive now?
Yeah. Legal. And know the time.
Yeah, do we need to amend the agenda to move the executive?
Wait till we get done with, uh, the meeting.
Okay, so we don't amend the agenda now?
Not yet.
Okay. All right, uh, motion to, to go into executive session at seven oh seven for legal matters?
So.
And inviting in Mr. Tony and Mr. Tolliver.
Second. Fourth call of the roll.
Mr. Booth.
Yes.
Mr. Simon. Yes. Okay, over to me.
Yes.
Mr. Sherman.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, I make a motion to return from executive at seven sixteen.
Second.
Second.
Fourth call of the roll.
Mr. Booth.
Yes.
Mr. Masonic. Mr. Taylor.
Yes.
Mr. Sherman.
Yes.
Yes.
Did everyone receive a minute from the last regular meeting on June twenty-sixth and a special meeting July sixth? Any corrections or additions? I would like to note that in the regular meeting, Mr. Sherman voted no to go into executive. And for rec, for the record, that was the initial discussion of the hiring of the new city manager. Would that motion be accepted?
A little bit. Second.
Mr. Masonic. Yes.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Mr. Sherman.
Yes.
Yes.
This is on the agenda, auditor treasures report, if there were one tonight? No?
Second meeting. Second meeting, okay.
Um, no mayor's corporate report, citizens' comments.
Look, look at Jen the wheel.
Come on, I just passed out. One of us just passed out.
You still on citizens' comments?
Yes.
Okay.
Please state your name and address and keep in mind the rules of the, um, council rules of conduct during citizens' comments. Thank you.
Stuart Brooks, one, one, two, three, East Wilms Street, Nelsonville, Ohio. This is a quick one. Uh, Tony Dunphy has said about thirty days ago that we would know in advance prior to hiring the new city manager, the public, when I'm speaking to the public in Nelsonville, uh, the seven candidates, and we would have an opportunity available to see their qualifications. Are we going to go to that for it or will this person be hired prior to that? I guess that's my question.
I believe until we do the interviews, those names are not out to the public, correct? And there are six, not seven, I believe, at this point.
Six, okay, but they would not, we would see it prior to being hired?
I think so. Should have.
Okay.
I mean, we've gone through the interview and the people, you know, except we have, we have to tell them. So we're going to announce their names if they make the cut.
After the first.
Right, yeah, absolutely, yeah, I don't want to jeopardize everybody else's job.
No, I mean, if they're looking for one. It could come down, I mean, if it come down into three, fine with it. I think the citizens, I think, everybody I've talked to would like to know prior to you hiring the person that we could see, you know, one of those three or two, all three, at their qualifications and so on and so forth.
After the first initial interview.
Yeah, you can have, you can have, you can let them know as part of the process going forward, their special meetings. The public can be aware, they can say, oh, I don't want to do that, or.
That's all we need to set process.
It's a good idea.
Okay, okay, so I have, thank you. Yeah.
I just got a question. Joya LaRue. Three eighty-two West Washington Street. Nelsonville. Uh, when you were talking earlier in the earlier committee meetings, we're talking about, uh, whether or not the candidates would be interviewed in public or whether they would be interviewed in executive session. Is this the time to say? What will, what will it be?
I believe the interviews will be in executive session.
All of them?
The first hand, second round, yes.
So that's all of them?
Yes.
I'm disappointed. Thank you.
Okay, any business or organizational comments? No? Moving on to committee discussion, did any committees meet since the last meeting? Okay, uh, please on fire Matt, and, um, let's see, what do we have for that? I believe, um, Mr. Barber, could you give us an update again on what you discussed in the please on fire?
So the place of fire committee, uh, meeting, what the topic I brought up was adding to the part-time firefighter roster. We currently have thirteen part-time firefighters right now. And I list a few firefighter positions that are available. We have eleven that are filled for provisional, they have to pass a test, uh, still within six months of appointment, uh, that day should be December twentieth. I have two temporary part-timers, which are actually volunteer firefighters for the department, that have been brought up to help cover shifts. Most of my volunteers are part-timers, like I said before, work many other jobs and they are not available for a lot of the open shifts that we have or shift cover that we need. So adding to the part-time roster would allow us to have a larger pool of firefighters to school from when we have shifts that are open and keeps those shifts covered at a lower rate of pay. Meaning part-time pay versus, uh, full-time firefighter pay.
And you have a recommendation for moving a part-time firefighter to your full-time spot available, correct?
Yes, so also tonight I have a recommendation to fill my open part-time position, which is a house firefighter. And I also have another recommendation for a part-time candidate. I just have to have council approval because like I said, we have a statute of thirteen, I only have eleven, but I have two of my part, volunteers that are pulled up temporarily. Now, those aren't permanent positions, uh, so in my opinion, those would violate the statute ordinance, especially if I can get my other candidate pulled up tonight, appointed, not give me another permanent part-time position, which would be twelve. And then it's on, uh, it was recommended, uh, from myself to the place of fire committee to add a number of available part-time positions from thirteen to twenty. And again, that does not create any shifts, it doesn't, oh, I'm sorry, it does not create additional shifts, it only adds a larger pool of firefighters at the forefront. This is the thing that I brought up as far as staffing, and the only other things I had for council tonight, I know it's not my effort, and I just, it's code of D E. The only other thing I had was some software stuff when I'm changing my house at the station. I brought up the Host Alert.
Yes.
Which was, uh, do you actually want me to continue with the software stuff or you want me to just continue on it?
I don't know, I think, I don't know anything about it, so I'm not in on my own place of fire, so.
It, it was not part of the committee report, it could be, it could be new business with council meeting, but it's just basically touches on what I talked about the last one. So the staffing stuff is the only thing to talk about during.
Okay. All right. Chief Tolliver, we discussed also the continuance, uh, parking ordinance, but some potential changes to that?
Yeah, we discussed it, and I think we'll add a, an option to, um, waiting for excellent circumstances such as getting one on vacation or.
Hospital standing or something like that.
Yeah. We'll add a section where people can notify the police department writing and.
So is that all?
Make sure it be.
So is that only for Poplar Street?
It's for everyone, it'll be for everyone.
For one more. So more likely you're referring to Poplar because all my vehicles in there, do they all run?
Yeah.
No, it's everywhere, there's, there's certain places where we're asking them to approve and.
You can just change the ordinance for twenty-four hours, seventy-two is actually going to be more time for continuous parking. It's all about you.
Okay. Um, judiciary committee also meant we discussed a comprehensive plan and recommending moving it to full council for discussion to send it to the planning commission. So any discussion on doing that? So you want to go ahead and move it to the planning commission?
I think, I think so, I do, I'm motion to go over the planning commission. I think we have a full commission, they want to do work, and, uh, I think that's, that's for, uh, to have them review not only the comprehensive plan but the, uh, city charter that we also discussed in the judiciary.
Correct. Yes, both those things.
I would motion that we pass up those on the planning commission.
Second. I'll say another motion if nothing else.
We vote on that?
Do you need a vote for that or?
No.
No.
Okay. All right. And, um, the finance committee, Matt, also?
And we've decided that we're going to do, are we going to do the emergency side for the one dollar? On the, uh, no?
We don't have a notice for that, it was nine.
Okay. We have discussed one dollar, uh, raise, but I have two headed. I'm sorry, I'm having a late black card, thank you, haven't seen your remote. Uh, anyway, uh, a dollar for them, and then also we discussed the possibility of getting a raise for the temporary, I'm sorry, the part-time people on the fire department, I did not realize they were making dollars an hour.
Uh, the volunteers are ten dollars per round, the part-timers are about twenty-five an hour.
I, I'm sorry?
So it's a combination department, we have volunteers, part-timers, and part-timers. The, the volunteers make ten dollars per round.
Okay.
The part-timers are about twenty-five an hour. And then my part-timers out of the.
Okay, so it's just the volunteers that make?
No, part-time. Part-time gets one of twenty-five, you don't have a reason, twelve point five.
I know I'm opening a car of worms, but that's all I care.
Okay. Any other committees? I think that was that first. All right. Uh, department updates, I'm pretty much sure you have anything, Mary?
So it's actually, it's P D and then K V versus mine, but I do have, um, my recommendations for appointments and also some software, I talked about, just some things I talked about last meeting, you can get your cap on that. So I, Devin, uh, has both letters there, uh, the recommendations, the appointments, uh, as everybody knows, we have a full-time position that opened. That position was advertised in-house for contract and letters of interest were submitted to myself and the city manager's office. And the recommendation, I'll do that for the city manager.
Yeah.
So those letters are with, for the city manager's report, the only other thing I had is talked about Host Alert at the last council meeting. That's a alerting software that actually alerts people's mobile devices, uh, active maps in their, in their automobiles, when they're on the bypass, uh, it's going to pop up, emergency vehicle ahead or emergency vehicle responding to your area or to your location. It is to, uh, eliminate distracted driver collisions with emergency personnel, and I have some stats. I was going to give everybody here. So these are nationwide stats right now, annually, we're seeing over fifteen thousand fire department vehicle collisions annually. And as many know, the cost of replacement of apparatus is, is, that's very expensive. The replacement cost of our ladder truck is one point two million dollars right now to replace a truck at the set. And that, that, and that doesn't take in effect the human factors, if we have a loss of life or disability. Uh, we work on the bypass a lot, you routinely see calls or speeds in excess of eighty miles per hour often on the bypass. In two thousand nineteen, there were four firefighter fatalities. Uh, firefighters being hit by distracted motors on the highway. In twenty twenty-two, there were forty-six. In twenty twenty-one, there were sixty-five, now these are the fatalities, these aren't just injuries, the injuries aren't included in these numbers. Twenty twenty-two saw fifty-one, and we've seen seventeen as of this month, the year twenty-three. So, you know, our job's dangerous enough, we shouldn't have to worry about, you know, liability deaths from distracted drivers. Distracted drivers collisions account for twenty-five percent of all liability death for fire EMS right now. That's a pretty big number. Uh, Host Alert is a device that is actually installed in fire apparatus and emergency vehicles. It is kind of standard in most emergency squads and fire apparatus now. It, uh, the price will be five ninety-nine per vehicle annually. I don't have to sign a contract, that'll get me into another contract, um, for next year, the year after, I can do it annually, that way we can eliminate the, um, the argument that we're trying to spend money that we don't have yet, I know that was an issue before. So we're looking at five ninety-nine a vehicle, and I'm looking to put that software, that device in three of our vehicles, with the three vehicles that are routinely on the bypass. I can absorb that money in my budget, so I don't have to allocate any additional funding. And if I can save a life, it's money well spent. I just need council's approval to go ahead and, and sign this paperwork and get this started. Well, if there's not an appropriation, this is what they might budget. So.
Right. If there's contract, will you have signed it then? As contracting the agent would say?
I don't know, that never came, that never came to fruition until the last administration. If it wasn't looking at budget, I always signed all the contracts. But say however you guys want to do it.
Why, right, the charter of the city manager, the contracting agent to the city?
So I just need that signed, this evening, we sign that.
I got a question, so this sends an alert to people's cell phone that you're in the area?
It kind of sounds like an, it kind of sounds kind of weird, right? Because we're talking about distracted drivers, right?
And we're sending the message to distract them by looking where you're at.
This is a nationwide system that's established, so anytime somebody's using a mapping, it's something that's a lucky to do, it'll pop up over the radio, it's audible as well, emergency vehicle ahead or, you know, fire apparatus within a half mile. This is tested nationwide and they're saying, in, in the areas that this is tested in, they see a ninety percent decrease in collisions.
Well, most people have a new updated car that'll do it for them, but around this area and everything like that, you're talking about people that have cars fifteen, twenty years old.
You're correct.
And their phone, here's their phone laying there, they're using their phone as a map, and they're driving, and now all of a sudden you throw an alert on that phone, and they're distracting because they're trying to find out where you're at.
Well, they're already on the.
So you're causing what's to prevent?
They're already on the phone, this is audible, and most of the, the reason, where we're going to use this is the bypass, this is where we need it. And the bypass needs a tremendous amount of that. And this is not something that, uh, this is not an idea that I came up without a memory, this is, this is naturally tested.
It's nice, but it's not naturally, so I can tell you that right now, I know for a fact.
So this system is now standard in, in fire apparatus and emergency squads.
Thank you, Chief Barber. What's, uh, what's term of contract?
I can do it annually, so it can be from year to year, there's nothing binding, you can cancel it.
We have master party, we have a good point. I'll be, to be safe, just make sure we don't get caught in any audit renewals or anything like that?
Most, everything audit renewed, you can cancel it within six months.
Yeah, we just have Bob take a look at it.
Yeah, I, I shut the bottle there. Uh, the only other thing I have is our emergency reporting software was purchased by E S O. And we are going through a transition from emergency reporting to E S O now. Again, I have another contract I have to sign, and I've always signed before, but we can have Devin sign up if I do want to. Since E S A bought the software, they're, they're not charging the fire department for the transition for our fire EMS reporting software. And the second year pricing is cheaper than what we're paying now for emergency reporting software, and then after the third year to go back up to whatever E S A decides. But that is the software that runs our department, but I, I definitely have to have that signed.
All right.
So there's nothing, there's no appropriations being asked for, there's no money playing, yeah.
Right, okay.
Right.
So you'll get with, um,
Yes.
Mr. Tolliver, thank you. Thank you, chief.
For the month of June, we responded to four hundred and forty-nine calls for service, which was an eight percent increase from last month. The dollar continued to go up as the weather stays nice and warm, people out, no more stuff, stay light a lot longer. Made fifty-five traffic stops, issued twenty-seven citations, responded to four traffic crashes, made fourteen criminal arrests, and sixteen warrant arrests. That's all for the month of June.
Now, is that only for the police department?
Yes.
Well, I got a question, it all concern this, but, um, I have a thirty-foot camper, okay, push out one, I wouldn't go live in it.
Okay, hold on. Wow.
Hear me out, hear me out.
No, we, we don't hear about, just continue.
Okay, maybe.
Say it. Keep a living.
Any, any questions for Chief Tolliver? Counselor questions?
What's your question?
I hope, when, when can we do something about the speeds that is happening on, uh, Chestnut Street?
Chestnut Street's getting a lot of speed?
Every day. I mean, it's somebody's going to get hurt, especially with more kids down there on the, on the east end. They, they come off of, uh, canal, down the Y, and I guarantee you, I've got people going by the house forty-five, fifty mile an hour.
So most of the problem's over on the, like, pay part of it?
Over, over on the, on the new pay part, going up to Speedway and everything else.
Okay.
I mean, it's, it's bad down there.
All right, all right, I'll definitely make that a priority.
Because I, I mean, I'm, I'm outside all the time anymore, and I very rarely see, uh, an officer down that way.
Mark, have you with the chief after reading and asking your question about?
No, I'm cool, I'm cool, I'll see where this is going. See where it is.
Thank you. Mr. Collin, could you give us an update on the search agreement plan?
They've got a new dozer finisher, a new operator. He's working on the back hill right now, so they can seed and straw it before they put the fence up, because there won't be any access to the hill behind it. They're going to be grading for the next two weeks, and that'll be a total. The week of seven thirty-one, they plan on doing the asphalt fence. They are working on the concrete right now. Internet will be up down there on July twenty-seventh. The startup for the clarifier will be the week of eight seven, startup for the oxidation tank will be eight fifteen, and the last startup will be electric eight, on eight twenty-one, they plan on it being all the startups completely done by the twenty-sixth. Um, the plant pump station will be up and running on the twenty-seventh. This week, they're man drill testing the twenty-four inch line that runs to the river. And it's got a little bit of mud in it, so they're going to clean it out and check everything, I'm going to have them camera to double check, because that's the last thing we need, is something happening to that once the plant is in full function. And that's where we're at right now, everything else is in, and they're just putting it all together.
Any questions from Mr. Tolliver? All right. Moving on, um, we need to amend the agenda to add ordinance thirty-nine twenty-three. So Mike can make that motion. Second.
How is the key learned?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yeah.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Do.
Yes.
Mr. Masonic? Yes.
You'll bring the ordinance?
Can we introduce it?
I'm sorry, need someone to introduce it, please.
And ordinance authorizing the auditor to pay twenty thousand two hundred twenty-six dollars and forty cents for the settlement of pending lawsuit. Whereas the city auditor needs to, needs authority to pay twenty thousand two hundred twenty-six dollars and forty cents for a settlement of pending lawsuit.
Whereas the city auditor needs to, needs authority to pay twenty thousand two hundred twenty-six dollars and forty cents for a settlement of pending lawsuit. Now therefore be intermed by the council of the city of Nelsonville, Acworth County, Ohio as follows. The city auditor and his office shall have the authority to make the payment of twenty thousand two hundred twenty-six dollars and forty cents to settle pending lawsuit. This ordinance shall be, it being held on first reading under suspension of the rules, Rio High Revise Code seven thirty-one point thirty and will be effective at the earliest date provided by law. Do you intend to buy counsel on first reading in the tenth, twentieth, the tenth day of July, two thousand twenty-three?
Any council discussions? Motion to suspend the rules? Second.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Booth?
Yes.
And Sonic? Yes, Mr. Taylor?
Yes. And um, motion to adopt, motion to adopt. Second.
Um, Norman?
Yes.
Mr. Booth?
Yes.
Sonic?
Yes. Okay, uh, city managers report.
So go ahead and uh, these recommendations out of the way. So the fire department has a recommendation to fill a full-time firefighter position. They recommend current part-time firefighter Quentin Brooks be appointed to an open full-time firefighter position effectively yearly. Firefighter Brooks is employed in good standing and surpasses all required qualifications and certifications for the position. I'd be very comfortable recommending him for that.
Okay, so we have a motion to accept uh Quentin Brooks as full-time firefighter.
Mr. Booth?
Yes.
And Sonic? Yes. Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Sherman?
Yes.
Then we have a second recommendation for a part-time firefighter candidate. It'll be for Tyler Crane to be appointed as a part-time firefighter. He's currently certified and in good standing at the same department and has already passed his background check.
Okay, so a motion to accept Tyler Crane?
Yes.
As a part-time firefighter? So.
And Sonic? Yes. Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Booth?
Yes. Anything else?
I don't really have much else, I was planning on mentioning a little bit about the sewer plant, but Jason covered that, so. And I didn't really.
That one topless.
Oh, here we go.
Was it five percent to twenty-four? There's the recommendation for the raise, the hiking cost.
For twenty-four?
The recommended raise for the, the project that our cap, for the wastewater treatment plant project that our cap produced for the city.
So there'll be no increase for twenty-three? Or?
Twenty-three's, I think he means at the end of twenty-three, four twenty-four.
Four twenty-four, okay.
Cause twenty-three's was done in January first.
Okay.
We did have a meeting regarding the waterline project.
It's starting maybe to kick off.
Yeah, so I predicted the project, they the Phase Two Water Project, they're gonna be set to get started with this on the seventeenth.
They're gonna start saw cutting Franklin Street next Monday. They're starting at the hospital and they're gonna saw clear the Ford Street. And then they'll work on that when they get closer to Ford Street, then they'll start saw cutting that Ford Street.
Are you gonna still do the lower end of Franklin or is that off?
Yeah, that, I told you that would be next year when they pave, cause they're not gonna pave until spring. And then when they pave, I'll piggyback off of them and I'll pave that up there.
Is that waterline or windcut? I don't want that done.
Yeah, everywhere except for waterline.
Any other questions from Mr. Palmer?
When they call, when they saw cut and put the fill back in, are you gonna, you see the fill or are you gonna use concrete? Uh, now you see, yeah, okay. Cause you know, I think probably gas uses concrete.
Carbon gas.
That makes, that makes it a little tougher when you gotta get back in there.
Yep, that's it, we have um, good at the order. Mr. Sherman?
Well, from the side you see Glenn that leave, like I, I certainly understand. Uh, she truly missed, now she's doing well. And then, you know, we had some issues this weekend, I guess, and things were put in the paper that probably were true, but I'd ask Chief Oliver if he could possibly do, have BCI investigate that whole situation because you had the authority to, to actually send that over to them.
You have to probably hold with the prosecutor's office, see what their plans are and.
I, I just think the prosecutor's office should be maybe kind of eliminated because don't be for.
Further possible conflicts.
Yeah. So I would say, I'd feel better just BCI.
Yeah, I understand that, but BCI, there was also large organizations.
Very good, very good.
Things down, of what was possible before they get super involved.
Great. I saw that.
Mr. Booth? Uh, thinking back off of that, I actually messaged BCI and the prosecutor's office. Well, BCI referred me back to the prosecutor's office. I spoke with Mr., the chief investigator Barrett today and then uh, what the process played out, figure out where the truth was.
I think there's an issue with the, the whole conflict.
They can't change their process.
Well, so the chief has more authority to ask them out of investigation.
Mr. Sonic?
I too have a problem with the prosecutor's office handling this. Because of Mr. Duffy's relationship. That's just for the record.
Mr. Taylor? Uh, the only thing I have is that uh, thank you for um, Chief Barber and the fire department for their assistance in the fireworks. It was a very nice display and a beautiful evening and I'm glad that I asked the chief earlier tonight how uh, you know, how that night went and it seemed to go very smooth. Uh, but you know, no injuries or anything that we are aware of, so I'm glad that everybody was safe. Good holiday.
I too wish Ms. Tingle the best and thank you every, for everyone coming. And with that, a motion to adjourn. Second.
Ready?
Yes.
It's Sonic? Yes. Yes. Mr. Taylor? Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Yes.
And we'll call this meeting at seven forty-nine.